Okay, so welcome to the public hearing for KB Enterprises, which is Willie's liquor license public hearing. We've reviewed his license and application, rather, and the deputy calls for the area, and we haven't seen any issues. Does anybody have any questions regarding the liquor license for KB Enterprise? Who's here representing?
Chris.
Did you want to get up and speak? You're good?
Yes.
Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll close the public hearing. Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of April 24, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, Lois Mischuh asked to be on the agenda, and I neglected to put her on there, so if you'd be so kind to add her to G.
EFG.
Under new business.
Okay, so added.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second that, so all in favor? We're going to table the minutes of the last two meetings as the office has just found some help this morning to get those typed up. They're not ready yet. Department head, committee chair, we don't have to vote on that, they're just tabled. Department head, committee chair update. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Atlantic broadband agreement.
As you know, the conference call scheduled with the attorney went in a different direction this afternoon because of something else that came up, so hoping that we can reschedule for that conference call next week with the three of you and move the agreement forward to next week.
Okay, sounds good. Flat Ground Road.
This is just staying on there as old business until we get all the surveys back, and I can report back to the board in regards to what the residents or property owners have said.
Okay.
They have all gone out.
Marijuana planning board update.
I put this on the agenda because, yep, come on up, so that you could update the board from the planning board side of it, and also so the board can share a couple of concerns that they've received as well.
Great, thank you. Richard Nass for the Marijuana Committee. So we did have a meeting. Three of the Marijuana Committee met with four or five of the Planning Board Committee. Just had a very broad discussion. I don't know that they've adopted or decided to do anything in particular. The only report is basically, we've talked, most of the planning board seems to have read the 20-page report. They're aware of the 500 pages of ordinances that they're welcome to get the detail out if they want to. I don't know, it wasn't any of our recommendation particularly that they need to do anything particularly, I think we're all waiting for June 12th.
Right.
See what happens beyond that, so that's pending. We did, for the Marijuana Committee, we did have a couple of questions on the public hearing, just to suggest you might give some thought to two things. One in particular, are you going to allow non-residents to speak? And number two, I don't want an answer to this.
Okay.
And the other is, are you going to set time limits for people to talk? And I think the third thing is, what role do you want the Marijuana Committee to play in this? Do you want us to answer questions? Or I think we'll ask probably just to make a statement to begin with, since we did the work.
Mm-hmm.
What role do you want us to play beyond that? We're willing to play a part in the public hearing, so it's really, I think those are the things that would be helpful.
Okay.
Going in.
All good questions.
Other than that, there's not much really to talk about, yeah.
Well, yeah. I'm not sure whose idea it was to go to the Planning Board right away, but...
Right. So Tom Cashin called me and said, you know what, interesting, what role does it play? I said, read the report, June 12th is coming up, and so that morphed into a call from Bob Smith. I said at the time, I'm not sure what role, I said, we're a function of the creation of the Selectmen, I'm not sure that they have any role. A lot of the stuff, marijuana zoning is land use ordinances, so that was part of the discussion, it seems to fit, but nobody has asked them to do that. I said, I suggested they check with the Selectmen as to what role.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't make sense to do it. I mean, it's great they know it.
Yep.
They know where to get the information.
Right, right.
But until the vote happens on June 12th, there really isn't any for the work.
And so we still don't have a vote from the Selectmen on a moratorium extension. You had some discussion, but I don't recall that you decided anything, maybe I missed it.
No, they haven't, and it doesn't expire till the end of May, so it's on their agenda and they're aware.
Okay.
One thing we did want to bring up, it was brought to our attention, that there were some remarks made regarding zoning and enforcement of zoning and ordinances.
Yeah, that was me.
Right, I just, we feel it was not necessary and uncalled for, because that's not how we feel that land use is working. We think they're doing a great job.
I've commented a number of times on our ability, our collective ability to enforce ordinances. You know, what happens if we end up with a pile of marijuana ordinances? I mean, every week that I've been up here lately, somebody's complaining about code enforcement, and so those are going to be difficult ordinances to enforce.
Right, they're enforcing more ordinances than not.
Yeah, I made the comment, and I got a reaction with the Planning Board, from Brenda, basically, she suggested that wasn't true, that we have trouble enforcing our current ordinances, and if I get the chance, I'd be happy to flesh that out with somebody. It wasn't a comment about the code enforcement, it was, these are difficult ordinances to enforce. The code enforcement, as not a police officer, he can't arrest anybody, he has to go to court, and so that makes it a long, involved, and expensive process, in my opinion, so I offered that.
Yeah, it was taken in a different context.
Yeah, and I can see why, because I made it quite plain that these, you know, they're difficult, and so I was going to go talk to Brenda, if she's the one that complained, and try to flesh that out a little bit, because it's not a criticism.
And it wasn't, she didn't complain, for the record, and we shouldn't be discussing her without her being present, but it wasn't about that. It was just the general comments that the zoning wasn't being enforced now, imagine adding to it.
Right, so that was a comment, it wasn't a series of comments, so I've made it several times.
No, but the board found it, they found it at a couple of marijuana meetings, the same comment, so...
Absolutely, because I've been suggesting that all along, so I'm the one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you for the work you've done.
Okay, thank you.
Warrant and finance meeting recap.
So warrant and finance met last Wednesday and got through probably about half of the warrant, a couple of things that I need to discuss with you. Two of the articles, they didn't vote in favor of primarily because they didn't feel like they had enough information in front of them, so I did ask them if I was able to gather some, if they'd consider revisiting them, they're meeting again tomorrow at 5:30. They certainly didn't commit, so I don't want to, you know, say that, but say, consider it. So both of the articles were $5,000 articles that the fire department was looking originally to put $5,000 in a capital improvement fund, and the town was looking to put $5,000 in a capital improvement fund, and both of those, it just didn't feel like they had the projects in front of them, so I wanted to discuss those with you, and they also inquired about more information on the EMA director and what information. They stopped at that article because one of the members felt like they didn't have enough information to determine if the person appointed was qualified, so I think I've got that one handled with some state statutes, but anyway, so in reaching out to the fire chief to kind of reiterate what warrant and finance said and what they were looking for, he didn't feel like the article was written the way that he actually intended it. So after he met with the treasurer yesterday, he is proposing that the article actually read, to see if the town will vote to establish a fire rescue department grounds and building emergency repair fund and to raise $5,000 to vet a fund. So he mistook it as, or miscommunication, he says it's not a capital improvement, he's looking for $5,000 in an emergency fund for building and ground repair. So the first question to the board is, you know, are you interested in changing the article, changing the way the article's written? And then the other one is, for the town's capital improvement, for the $5,000 that you're moving forward for upcoming capital improvements, do you have information that you want to further share with them that I can, you know, try to give them some of the projects, so, you know, the furnace, the siding, but they wanted a more detailed list before they really were comfortable voting on it, so...
So the town's capital improvement account, we had the, we had the siding, this is an account, the siding has been taken out of...
Last, some, last year, we actually appropriated money out of undesignated funds for the siding.
Okay.
And that money has to be used before June 30th.
Okay.
We have, and don't quote me, I'm going to say about 40,000 in the capital improvements fund now. We do have to ask the townspeople for approval to expend it. Right now, you're just appropriating it, so the money goes in the account, the board can't expend it without town meeting vote, so the idea in the past was to build up this quote-unquote savings account, so if something happens when this furnace finally dies, that you had, you know, you'd still have to have a special town meeting to ask to expend it, but...
Yeah, I don't know if we need that fire department one, where we have, we also have a $15,000 account.
The emergency.
Emergency.
And he might not have been aware of that.
Right.
I didn't speak to him about it, so...
Yeah, we've kind of already got it covered, it's...
Yeah, we have an article, $15,000 for any emergency, as you see necessary, in the beginning of the warrant.
It's almost double covering it.
Right, because I think when we spoke to the treasurer, she said, other than tearing down that sand and salt building, we haven't touched that $15,000 in...
I think eight years.
Eight years, yeah. And that's not something that rolls over, goes back in the undesignated fund, so if no emergency happens, then, you know, it just...
Fortunate enough to get $15,000 in the next year, it's just another, it's just $15,000, that's what it stays at, so...
Okay, so warrant and finance is meeting tomorrow at 5:30, and, you know, I hate to push you on the spot, but I, if we're going to make any warrant changes, I need to be prepared to discuss it with them and tell them who, what, where, and why. Or you're welcome to join me at the meeting tomorrow at 5:30, and we can tell them as a group.
Group.
Go team, right? I like that one the best.
Just to let you know, we counted up the items, we only have like 20 or 21 articles to go tomorrow night, so...
Yeah, but they're road-related.
Yeah.
Minor.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think the fire department one, we could almost pull.
Yeah.
Pull the fire department article altogether.
I mean, we've got it covered under the $15,000, and...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as far as the capital improvement, the capital improvement account, so the town is asking to put $5,000 into their capital improvement.
And so they want to know what exactly that would be for? So we're looking at possible furnace?
Well, I guess, the way I took it, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the warrant and finance, but because there's no other article in there asking to expend anything, they're just kind of want to know what the process is, or what the plan is.
Well, we haven't put, we've taken money out in the past years, but we haven't put any in, right?
I'm pretty sure we put a little bit in each year.
A little, okay. But we've been taking the other pieces of the siding out from that account, or...
The year before, yes, because they were going to double up this past year, that's where the $30,000, we were going to finish the, all of the back, so they took that out of undesignated funds, so it wouldn't drain the capital improvement, because we know this furnace is going to die. I mean, we've, you know, we've been lucky, I mean, you know, and the flip side, you put an article in there asking to expend X amount for a furnace, just in case, I mean, if the furnace doesn't go and we get another winter out of it, then the money just goes back, you know, stays in the account. They just want to know long-term what you're going to do with the account. We had talked about filling the well, when we've had just as much trouble on the new well as we do the old well, the water people came out, made a recommendation that you needed to fill the other one, because one's leading into the other, you know, we have the kitchen...
And that was $3,000 or $4,000, I think, to do the well.
Right. We have the kitchen that is barely up to code, that at some point that's going to need to be done. They just want a plan. So we, I mean, we can type all of those things and put them together and just say, this is what you're thinking, at this point, you still don't want to move forward with asking for any money out of that account for next year? Wait till the following year and plan out the projects better?
Yeah, I'd like to plan the projects better.
Okay, I'll see what they say. And EMA, go on.
Yeah.
Are you waiting for answers on that one?
Sure.
So I think those were the only three questions that I had to get answers from. Does that sound right? You've got three members here, sounds like the only issues, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
New business, Southern Maine Veterans Memorial.
So we will table that, I don't see Mr. Bachelor here, my email said he wanted to receive his public check tonight, but we'll hold on to that for now.
Okay, Betty Smith?
Good evening, and thank you. I'm gonna throw a lot of information at you, so I'm gonna give you my notes, and I'll have that for you.
Just remember to state your name and where you're from.
Yes. My name is Betty Smith, and for the past three years, I've been the program director for the Acton-Chapley YCC, and first and foremost, I just want to take a moment and thank the town of Acton for all of their support over the years, for the important work that the crews do every season, so thank you for that. As a collaboration between the Moussum Lake Region Association and the ASYCC, we collaborated to do the complete watershed survey for the entire Moussum Lake watershed, which in this particular case, we included Goose Pond as well. And we, in order to, our end result wanted to be applying for federal grants. Before we could do that, we needed to do the watershed survey and have that approved, and then we needed to do the watershed-based management plan, and we needed to have that approved, and those two things have been done. So I'm here tonight to explain to you a little bit about the grant that I'm writing, and collaborating with, again, with the Moussum Lake Region Association, the York County Soil and Water Conservation District, and Chapley, I've given this presentation to the town of Chapley as well. Anyways, we are writing a grant, and the total grant will be, we're looking at about $97,000 to $98,000. Of that amount, I've allocated, it may change, there's nothing definite just yet, we're still in draft form, but I'm looking at about $15,000 to $17,000 of those dollars, construction dollars, to go to the town to help fix some of the road sites that were identified in the watershed survey. And I gave you that list, and that is this one there. So that's, you know, one of the things that we want to include, of course, you know, when you work with a federal grant, if it is actually awarded, this is a statewide competitive process, but there is a match component to that. So if there's $100 of grant money coming, going out, then $100 of match, whether it be cash or in-kind, has to come back in to match those dollars. So when we're talking about road projects, you're, that's, you know, a little bit more money than just, you know, a buffer planting on a residential property or something, so... But typically, my experience has shown that when the town is hiring contractors to do the work, all of that cost can be towards, can be put towards a match. So the grant funds, the construction funds can be used for materials to fix some of these sites. When I'm here, in addition tonight, to give you all this information, we are requesting the town provide overall general support for this grant. We would like to have, if there's anyone interested from the town that would like to participate on the steering committee, we'd love to have someone from the town. We would like to be able to pass through grant announcements so that they can be posted on the webpage. Occasionally, we might need to have a meeting, a space for a meeting or a workshop, if that can be held here, you know, then that is also counted towards match, the value of the space. In addition, we'd like to have a commitment to addressing and fixing some of these road sites that were on the list. In order to be competitive in this grant process, a cash match is customary, and it indicates to the Maine DEP and the EPA that there's a level of ownership and commitment. And we already know that the town is committed to natural resource protection because of your support of the ASYCC over all these years. So what we'd like to do is take the support funding that has already been allocated to the ASYCC, take $3,000 of that, put it in the grant as a cash match from the town, which in effect it is, that goes directly to help the crew get work done on erosion control projects. So there's no additional monies that we're asking for from the town, so we're just taking out from the YCC, it's going to help the YCC get the job done, so, but that's something I just wanted to be upfront with. And lastly, we would need a letter of commitment stating all of these things that I've requested, and that gets submitted with the proposal, the grant proposal. We have templates, we can provide you with, you know, the whole thing, and we would just need a signature and that sort of thing. The RFP, the Request for Proposal, is out probably this week, and grants will be due, or proposals will be due the first of June. So we have, you know, three or four weeks of time here. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay, so...
Can I just ask a question regarding the warrant? So when you said the $3,000 out of that, out of the AS money, the $15,000 that gets appropriated, assuming it gets appropriated, is that something that they can pay you directly, or you're looking for the towns to pay Moussum Lake watershed?
No, the YCC can do that.
So we would give them the regular $15,000, like any other year, it's what they decide to do with it, because if not, that might change the warrant article, how it's written, or...
Yeah, no, we don't...
Warrant and finance member's already voted on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, right, if they see fit, okay, good.
Don't change it, it's just as easy for the YCC to do it.
Right.
So, great, thank, good question.
Okay, so there's no additional monies you're asking for, just to be, just to clarify?
That's correct.
You just currently need a letter of commitment signed by the Board of Selectmen that you have...
We would need that you're committing, you know, general support to the project.
Yeah.
Space if we need a meeting, or, you know, those types of things.
You had an example that would list those.
Yes, I have all of that, that I can provide.
Yeah, so the space, and so you, again, you said, you mentioned something about the work on the roads on this spreadsheet. What sort of...
Well...
You're saying when the grant comes through...
If the grant is awarded.
Yeah.
Okay, then the way I have built the grant and the tasks within each grant, there's a road improvement task, and the high and medium impact sites that were identified in the watershed survey, which is on that list.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we would like to address first.
Mm-hmm.
And what the grant can do is provide construction funds...
To get that done.
To help pay for the material.
Oh, but not the labor.
Right, the labor is what's going to be the match for any of that work.
From the town of Acton.
Correct. So you would be fixing a road anyways, then, you know, and we may be talking about the same roads, you know, when it comes right down to it, but if you're going to hire a contractor, then that value can be match.
It sounds like...
Does that make sense?
Something the lawyer would have to look at, as far as committing...
Well, I'm thinking, I think of the road commissioners, to at least look at the list and determine, because they look at the list and determine if they agree with the, you know, the roads that, because essentially, it's going to come out of their budget, they're going to be the ones that fix it.
But the other problem is, is on our warrant, we can't apply for, take a grant that obligates the town in any way.
Right.
But we're not, so we're not applying for the grant?
No.
Not, but we're...
No.
But we're committing, our letter commits...
Resources and dollars in a roundabout way to it, so, which is a problem.
So let me, let me just add that the list of roads that you have was...
Isn't that private?
That snapshot that we found when we were doing the survey last summer. Between last summer and today, we had a really weird winter, and there could be other issues, other road issues, that are higher priority than those. So we, that's a best guess candidate site list that I have to submit to the grant.
Couple of them are private roads, though, so if the town has to pay for the maintenance, you can't pay for the maintenance on a private road.
That's another issue.
And we, yeah, we can't do...
But some of these are private.
Okay, so, and that's where we weren't sure on some of them. So, yeah, the grant funds cannot be used to do maintenance, so if we needed to say...
Right, so that's what you're saying, the town would pay for the maintenance, you'd pay for the material? Is that what I'm, the grant would pay for the material, but the town would pay for the maintenance, right?
For whoever's doing that maintenance.
Right, so our road commissioners do their own work, and I think that the concern is, is that we can't use tax dollar money to maintain a private road.
Right.
So they would come off.
Yeah.
Private roads would have to come off.
Yeah, you could take those off. So I would have to contact the private road associations, if one exists, and then work with the private road separately, so...
We also can't take grant money if it encumbers the town.
Right.
That's the biggest problem.
So the question is...
And if you give us...
Does the road commissioner's plan to fix, you know what I mean, I mean, she's got these listed as high.
Right.
I guess...
If you give us $20,000 in materials to fix a road, but we have to match it with, what is it, 40%?
Yes.
40% of labor or whatever.
Total, yeah.
We can't accept that, according to the way our warrants are written.
Yeah, I have to read the article. I think that the best thing to do is so that we're not all answering it on the spot, if you can, we also have a warrant article that says the treasurer reviews all grants that the town gets associated with, so if we can get a copy of the grant...
Absolutely.
And a copy of the format letter...
Right.
And let us do a little research on our end.
Not that we don't want it, it's just, you know, we're kind of tied, we can't bend from these rules.
How did you leave it with Chapley?
That they also wanted a copy of the grant once it's finalized, because it's in draft form.
Yeah.
So give me a couple of weeks to finalize some numbers, and then I'll get you, you know, a better hard copy of what's, you know, the grant's going to look like, so that way you can investigate...
The attorneys can review it, right.
Right, right. Chapley didn't seem to think that, you know, I mean, it sounded good to them, and they didn't state any issues known.
They might have different...
They may, they may, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So that, we'll just wait to hear from her, give us the camera, we'll wait and see what she says.
Okay. Winter Road overdraft.
Yeah. So as you're aware, we're allowed 15% overdraft for roads and general assistance, we're snow plowing. We were at $705 as the balance that we were allowed to overdraft, we just got in another salt bill, though, for $3,800. So we are going to be over the 15% allowed, which is going to require either a special town meeting, or, the question was raised as to whether or not it could be paid out of general maintenance, out of the roads' general maintenance, don't have an answer for you, we put it out to legal, so I don't have to get back to on that, but those are the current overdrafts as of yesterday from the treasurer.
I guess I'd like to see how much we've spent total on salt alone this year. I guess I'd like to see how much we've spent total on salt alone this year versus how much sand we spent.
So you want salt and sand prices?
Yep.
For this 18?
19.
17, 18 winter?
17, 18, yep. And then I guess I'd like to know, you know, are the guys, the road commissioners watching the budget line?
Do you want me to call them in?
Do they feel they, maybe?
I mean, I know from the brief conversation I had with the treasurer is that essentially last Tuesday, when we had that ice-snow mix, that they used the last of the material that day. And that because there was a threat of weather on Thursday, she indicated to me that they needed to order more. I don't know how much this is, but that was on the radar, so. But I can invite them into next week's meeting. Michelle did say she has 60 days to pay the bill. And also, I would hope that we would have something back from legal by the time, because if not, you'll have to have a special town meeting to pay the bill.
So before they ordered the $3,800 with the salt, we were over the 15% by $705, no?
No, we still had 15,000 we could've spent.
Okay.
So, so the total road budget, which is the 699,000, we're allowed to go over 15%, which was 104.9. And we had currently gone over 104.2.
104.2, okay.
So the 700 is what we had left to spend.
So we were okay until they ordered 38?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll see if I can get them in for next week.
Road committee appointment.
So for your request, I advertised it a little longer. I still got no other names. This individual reached out to me in the beginning, has shown some interest in it. He's also done a lot of work already, I think, on the side, maybe with the committee a little bit. So he's got some knowledge and background. So we'd like to give it a shot.
Okay. Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, to Charles Gregory, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as road committee member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2019, given under hand this 24th day of April, 2018.
Make a motion, we appoint Charles Gregory to the road committee as a road committee member.
I'll second that. All in favor? Chuck, I think he likes to be called Chuck, maybe. KB Enterprises, Willie's liquor license.
Actual applications, just all the proof of postings, so I think that's the third page in.
Corporation name, KB Restaurant Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as The Pottingshed, 1060 Route 109. We have a liquor license for Restaurant Lounge.
May, in the May, in the June.
Is it, is it an annual?
Yeah, it's up on the right-hand corner, the expiration date should be.
Oh, June 4th, 2018.
Yeah. But we appreciate them coming in early. We've been after them both places last few years. So we don't wanna do it last minute. So thank you for submitting it early.
This is the page, okay. Do we have a motion to?
Have we heard from a fire chief as far as?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Indeed. So I did ask, the fire chief was gonna be here, as he was here for the last one. Got stuck on a call in Wakefield, not gonna be back on time. I'd recommend to issue it. I've been in there recently and don't have any concerns with the establishment.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
Make a motion, we approve the liquor license for KB Restaurant Enterprises.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Chris, I have just a couple of things on the agenda. You're welcome to wait. I'll get you a copy of it, or you can come up tomorrow and pick it up. So as you're aware, the Acton Fairgrounds has a policy that they require gathering permits that coincide with our ordinance. This is for Deadbeat Customs. They're going to have a rally on July 28th at Irontails, and they have reserved the town, not the town, excuse me, they've reserved the fairgrounds for tenting and camping that night, because the events are in the day. They've got all types of shows and competitions and things going on on the 28th. He has met all the requirements through the fairgrounds. He's paid his fee. He's provided certificate of insurance. They haven't been in Acton before, so I, you know, can't say that there's anything to check up on per se, but it's a fairly large event. They're expecting between 400 and 500 people to possibly camp out.
Do you have any questions?
Can we run it by the sheriff's department? Do they?
The name?
They've done, you said they've done these events at different locations?
Yeah, his last one, I think he told me it was in a rundle, but no, I didn't, I haven't run the, it's a Massachusetts, the individual's from Mass, I mean, I can.
He's good timing. If you wanna table it and.
So you want a background check on the individual that's?
A background check or just to see how the other event went?
But was it, the other event wasn't in York County?
Oh.
So I'm not sure what they're gonna have. So the event is actually at Irontails, and it doesn't require any, any permits or anything. Mass gathering is from the amount of people that will be tenting at the fairgrounds.
So this is not for the event at Irontails?
No, no, it's for, right, it's for the.
Tenting at the fairgrounds.
Tenting at the fairgrounds. The rally, I was just telling you what was going on, what the connection was with Irontails and what would be going on. So essentially, you know, at the end of the day, after show and competition and whatever they do at Deadbeat Custom rallies, they'll walk across the street and sleep.
Right, and they come from afar, assuming people come from all over.
I would imagine, I would imagine.
That many?
A lot, yeah.
I guess I'd like to look, you know, give us a week to look at it and then.
Okay, so what would you like me to look?
Okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
What is it you wanna know?
I don't know if it's possible to find out how other events went down safely, without trouble.
Yeah, I'd say just, you know, have a deputy take a look at it and see what his thoughts on it are, just.
I mean, I think that, he owns a business? Deadbeat Customs, what is that?
It's a motorcycle, they sell motorcycle attire. There's a website, he told me.
Okay.
It's, I believe it's motorcycle attire and stuff like that.
Yeah, I've never heard of it or seen it before. I just hate to jump to a yes when we haven't done a little bit of research on something this big.
Best selection of Harley-Davidson parts, helmets, riding gear. So it's an apparel shop, looks like.
Okay.
Okay, I will try to find some information on prior events and to see if there's been any issues, right?
Yeah, just like, you know, we're checking the liquor license and.
Yes, ma'am.
When they come into town, come in for renewal. Let's see, Lois is up.
I'm actually coming to you guys on behalf of Maple Grove Association Cemetery. I've been invited to the Forester and Conservation Department a couple of times as Maple Grove, because you know where they're getting into the Hebo-HiBo. It took me four times to get the Freedom of Information Act. I had to come see Jen, get the information we needed. This information I asked them about prior to even getting us, they wouldn't get the information, not about roads, road cultures, how to open them, how to maintain them, how to access them.
Who's them?
Conservation and Forester.
Okay.
They gave me this envelope, which had 22 people on that area. Eleven of them replied. Over half of them do not want that bothered, they don't even want the area touched. I, we were kinda, I felt as the cemetery association, we were misled. I understood a couple of times that they were actually, like, we own the front entrance, we own half, the neighbors own the other half. And that basically, we were being told that we're holding up the projects and holding up stuff, because my understanding was, is that they had other people that were interested in it. I got the letters, and I asked, I asked for them, for the survey that they put out. Eleven of them responded, over half of them, 11 that responded, doesn't, don't want you guys even in there. They said if you can't tax it, they don't want you in there. And the other group that responded to me, because they know that I'm down at the other end and we work at the association, I told them when they got their letters, to please respond to their letters, not to me, but they responded to me, and they're not happy. I don't know how to get them to respond to their letters.
You can't, I mean, they have to respond to the letter.
The letters that we have, or that I was given, most, 95%, of them say, leave it alone. They don't want you guys to access it, don't want you guys to touch it, don't want you even in there.
Hold that thought for just a second. So just to kinda catch up, and you know, in all fairness, so Lois did come to me because she was looking for information from the Forest Conservation Committee. She indicated that she had asked the committee for it directly two or three times. I reached out to the chairman. They disagree with that information, we're not here to dispute that, but I wanna put that out there, that they didn't feel like there was ever an official request. With that said, we got her everything, they gave, turned over everything to me, we made copies and got it to her right away. So they, have they come back to you since the survey to say that they were moving forward with anything? Because I don't think we've seen them since then, have we?
No.
I believe so.
I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, when you say everybody's not happy, I'm not sure that they've come back to say they're gonna do something.
Well, they've invited us twice to meet with them. My thing is, even reading those surveys, people that are against these want to meet also. My concern is, are they meeting with us individually, so they don't want us all in the same group, so they don't have to listen to us all?
What's the survey saying?
Ask them?
Excuse me?
Have you asked them that?
Uh, no. Reasons being.
So, I mean, and not to, I mean, would you be interested, I mean, would you be willing to sit down with, with the chair?
Actually, we've actually sat two or three times, that's what I'm saying, Jen. But they only hear what they wanna hear, they say what they wanna say, and this, this road has been closed long, even without going back to 1937. This road has been discontinued and closed well over 20 years. And if you read the discon, if you read the state laws and standards, it hasn't even been technically opened or driven across.
Right, and they're not trying to open it.
Just because you have an easement, doesn't give you the right to have on the whole easement either.
Right. So they approached the board about a walking trail. Remember that several months back?
Yeah.
And they were gonna reach out to the surveys. But I guess my question is, have they done anything since then?
No.
So maybe we should follow up with them first and find out what their next step is, maybe invite you both to the meeting next week.
I'm very frustrated, being led that we were part of the issue, being, that's what I'm assuming, that's how I felt, and that's how my co, I had, I had my co-chair here too also. We both felt like we were being told, it's your fault, we can't do this, we can't move on because it's your fault. And because, and just because you, you measure the wideness in the front, it's, what was it, three, three rods and a half or something like that, doesn't necessarily mean you guys are entitled for three rods and a half. Then they think they are. You don't even have that out back. You get beyond the cemetery, you're lucky, you have 10. Not, I mean, 10 feet, not 10 rods, 10 feet. You only have to cross over a bridge that's dangerous, that the gentleman put the bridge in so he could get from one end of his property to the other. Not for us to be on it, not for us to play on it, not for anything for us to do. It was for his, because he owns property right behind the cemetery, and he owns property across the way. It was for his access.
So I just wanna question, I have a question to clarify. You said a survey went out to 11 landowners?
Well, there's 22 people that live on that.
So 22 people?
Eleven of them replied.
Yeah, you guys saw the survey, you approved it.
Where's the other 11?
They just didn't reply.
They just didn't reply. Some, two of them on here have actually passed away. I don't know if their family members will reply or not.
So it's a flat ground road. I mean, we can, all we can do is send them out. If they don't reply, then, you know.
And the only other thing I can get is like, we, they know us as the association, because the association's been there for over 200 years. They want, they, a couple of them that have actually owned property behind there have actually come to myself only because I deal with whatever, and asked me, and I told them, please fill out your survey. You know, that's the head stat, the first stat. One of them, like I said, I'm not gonna get any names, one of them mentioned, said, well, no matter what we do, they're gonna do what they want to anyway. I said, not necessarily. I said, you need to fill out that survey. Then I have a couple in here that have said, they don't want anything back, that it's not gonna be taxable. In other words, if it's not gonna bring in an income, they don't want it. If it's gonna change the environment, they don't want it. So, and this is, and these are in here.
So of the 11 that responded, two don't want anything, and four said no?
One don't want anything, over six of them don't want any of that 11 that responded.
So seven.
And again, we haven't heard from the Forest Conservation Committee. We don't know what their next step is. The last we heard from them at this meeting was that they were going to send, they asked for permission to send the surveys out. And they asked for permission for the abutters, which you gave them, so I gave them all, and they've sent it out. So why don't we invite them in?
Yep.
And have a, you know, roundtable discussion with Maple Grove and, you know, get to the bottom of what the next step is, and that'll give you a chance to review the surveys.
Well, my only other problem is with that, right now, Jen, Maple Grove only has, we have four, we have seven people, but out of the seven, two of us are only available because the other ones are out of state.
So we can schedule it when it's good for the two of you. I'm sure we can come up with a mutual time.
And that's kinda my, that was kinda my issue. My other issue is, is it leads right in, not just Maple Grove, but it also leads into being part of the cemetery committee. Because this is actually cemetery work, it belongs to the town, we're working with this, we're trying to obtain it. I've stressed very hard to the cemetery committee, because I'm passionate about it, don't take my passion out on, on, you know, don't lean with me, because I'm passionate. I want you to lean wherever the law puts you. I don't want, because you're, you're my friend, you're gonna go this, I want you to go wherever the law is gonna put you. There's four of them on that committee, other than myself, and I've stressed it a couple more times, you know, do what's best for us, not what's best for Maple Grove or what's best for Lois Mischu. I want it done for everybody. It's just like the association. You guys don't realize, but for every person that's buried there, they have one or two people that are members of the association. I have, there's over 500, there's over 500 people buried there. Each of them have one to two people apiece that own property in there. They're part of the association also that have say. This isn't just an overnight adventure, this isn't just, you know, us being us. Before any of this even took place, you'd have to, they'd have to also agree. The one thing we did get out of them, and they admitted to, is that the road does, half of it does belong to us, it goes to the middle. That's what they told us the last time we got, the middle goes to the middle. But they seem to think that they own the three rods, and it doesn't happen that way. It's not decisive in any of our deeds, only that we own to the middle and half, and it's been closed, discontinued, three times that I know of. It's gone to two lawsuits, and this could possibly end up being more.
And remember that you have documents in there that the board had the attorneys look into Hebo-HiBo Road recently as well. When we started, when the Forest Committee came before you guys, and they had, they had the questions, and they wanted to create the walking trail, you had the attorney look into it and give you a recommendation. So you have that in there, because Ms. Mischu had come back to, back to the board saying there might be some possible conflicts. I called the attorney to run her name by, to make sure there was no conflicts, that he wasn't working for her, to make sure his opinion stood. They sent the surveys out, and we literally have not seen them since then. So I think the board appreciates and understands your frustration, but we need to get them here in the same room and determine what the next step is.
It's very frustrating, Jen.
Before we can do anything.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, I'll schedule it, I'll.
Yeah, it's just very, it's just very frustrating, because what I got here, compared it, every time I asked them, every time we met, now we've met with them twice, every time I've met, I've asked them for the information that they have, and it's on film, I don't care what they all say, it's on film, I asked them twice. it, every time I asked them, every time we met, now, we've met with them twice, every time I've met, I've asked them for the information that they have, and it's on film, I don't care what they all say, it's on film, I asked them twice. I spoke to Jen once here at a meeting, and I said, and she came out and gave me what she had at that point. I came in, what, two weeks ago, and asked underneath the Freedom of Information Act to get this. I shouldn't have to fight Grand Central Station to have something that's simple.
Oh, there was no fight, for the record. As a Freedom of Information Officer, I got that.
It's a process, you can ask for it on film, but you still have to fill out the paperwork.
And I did, and that's what we did. And that, that pertains to closures, that pertains how to log it, that pertains how to open it. Though that is one of the, one of the things, I asked them as a group, did you happen to go on the website and asked about those laws? They looked at me like I had funny heads. I mean, one of the members that was at, one of the members that are actually on our, on our towns cemetery association, went with me, as well as, like I said, my, my vice president went with me to look at this. And even the one that's a member of the cemetery associate, the cemetery, town cemetery, he asked questions. He actually asked them if they'd gone and looked at this. And, you know, we were just getting the runaround, I felt, and this is getting to the point of where, we're not, we're not playing, you know, enough.
There's a chance to get everybody together and put everything on the table and communicate. I mean, that's the only way we're gonna get through it, we need to put everybody together.
Especially, especially we have people that don't, you know, most of them don't want it. This is what bugs.
And the board needs to, the board hasn't seen the surveys, so give them a chance.
We have not seen the surveys, yeah.
All right.
We'll see you soon.
Thanks.
Okay.
Can I have those surveys, I can copy everything, please? All right.
Those aren't the surveys, those are the copies of road.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yes, ma'am. You're hitting that light switch.
Public comment. I was like, what was that? I happened to look down.
All right, now I get to time you, you got three minutes under this section, Lois. Go, girl.
Well, my three minutes is right now. May fifth, over the Historical Society, we're having a gathering at one o'clock for a murder that happened back in the nineteen hundreds.
I saw that advertisement, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I forgot to bring it with me.
Well, the woman actually is buried here in Acton, and you'd have to go, and I got the book on how, what happened to them and so on and so forth, and how the mystery case was solved, but it was pretty cool. And what, actually, the Acton Historical Society is actually going to have that, like I said, May fifth at one o'clock. Everybody's welcome, it's open to the public, it's gonna be pretty cool. We've just talked to them about quote, recording it, and that's, they're gonna go and record it, so those that can't make it.
Whose property is it on?
Excuse me?
Whose property is it on?
That's the, what do you mean, the?
Isn't it about the Acton Chapley?
We're going to the Historical Society.
Historical Society.
The woman's buried here in Acton.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Buried up on.
But there were Newfield murders.
Right.
But the filming is gonna take place at a town property, okay?
Right. And I had asked, I'd asked Mr. Corey, Mr. Corey said it was all right. And getting, and getting back to that woman that was here just a few minutes ago about that loan for three thousand dollars and the meeting grant or whatever that, I'd be very cautious, because she's, they're talking about needing that before June first. We don't even vote as a town until June, what, sixteenth?
Actually, the grant doesn't come out on her paperwork till the middle of September, so.
Okay, because this is something that she said, because I got it written down, she said something about the first week of June, and it was like.
I think that's when she expected to have the grant written together, but it's almost a year out, if you look at her paperwork, but.
All right. Just be proud.
Dennis Long, the real simple way to solve the issue of that land over on the Hebo-HiBo is, is do like I said for the last twenty years, sell it and put it back on the tax paper, tax rolls, and then it saves the town a lot of money and a lot of fighting. The other two things, you guys are talking about the capital improvements, and there is, there isn't anything in the warrant to finish the siding this coming year? Is that true?
There is.
No.
Oh, not this warrant, sorry. We still have money left over from last year's.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you're not complaining on getting that done between now and July first, are you?
We are working on getting all avenues to possibly expend some of that money on the siding, absolutely.
Okay. The other thing is, I don't know if anybody realizes, that when they put in this furnace back in the early eighties, I guess it was, it was a secondhand furnace at that time, and it was donated. So, we've definitely got our money's worth out of this thing, and I really don't understand why, we have the money in the capital improvement account, why don't you get, just replace the done thing, and then you don't have to deal with the issues of it not working and going out all the time, and plus the fact, a new one obviously would be a lot more energy efficient, even though you guys got a heck of a deal on your LP, but it'd still be a lot more energy efficient, and I'd really like to see that thing taken to the transfer station, and don't have to deal with it anymore. And you have it, have the new heating system installed, so that you don't have to worry about the water freezing out there in the kitchen anymore, and, and different things like that. We've been dealing with that for forty years or whatever, and it's probably time we moved on a little bit. The other thing is, when Betty Smith was talking tonight about doing work on these roads and the road commissioners and different things like that, and I understand that you're gonna have the road commissioners look at the stuff, but most of the stuff that we have in that watershed, they are on private roads. And what that does is, that goes right back to what the people on the private road wanted, was that money for the road associations, which would fit in to exactly what she was talking about tonight, for matching funds to do stuff on these roads. And, I mean, there was a lot of research done into that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and why it was there. And I, I was very disappointed when I, when I see it was changed to fifty, because when Ani made his presentation, it seemed to be pretty well received, and lawyers looked at it, and everything was all good. And that's what that money was for, and, and with loan it to fifty thousand dollars, it really isn't a heck of a lot of money to do stuff like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Hart, road committee.
Sorry.